Lawrence County, Lawrence County, we're in the midst of a long, long drive to the first of the week, followed by Bruce Miller's time attack. You see me here, would you please do this in front?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and our indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll keep maintaining for brief about silence. Thank you. Vanessa, please call the roll.
I'm going to move my chair. I'll give them a start.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Here.
Commissioner Vogler?
Here. Here. A real officer reports and comments looking at the audience today. The only individual I can classify as a real officer, representative of a real officer, would be Pat Nico with Human Ill Probation Office, just as he calls under reports. Had anything to report about being on the authority on the agenda?
No.
Great. Public comments, any member of the public who should make comment? Great. This one contractual, we have a number of repository properties to vote on today, so we're just going to sort of jump right into it here. First on stack, we have a property on Eggkorn Street, parcel ID 04-144400. Mr. Charles Bromer placed a bid of $500 for the property located on Eggkorn Street. I will note this property was denied due to the fact of it being, by the city, denied due to the fact of it being on the dead list and uninhabitable is the reason listed. Questions, comments on this? Hearing none, we will make this resolution 2021-.
347.
347. And I will take, I think, again, I think the appropriate way to do this is if we take a motion to approve and then vote it down. So I'll take a motion to approve resolution 2021-347.
Second.
The motion is second, ready for discussion. Hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
No.
No.
Commissioner Vogler?
No.
That's failed.
Thank you. Sorry. Got Eggkorn Street. Up next, in Shenango, resolution 348, property located on Kerr Street, 139 Kerr Road, parcel ID 31-901454. Daniel Gordon has bid $500 for this property. It was duly approved by what looks to be the school district. And I will take a motion, does any question to comment? Go through.
Second.
The motion is second, ready for discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Those who care.
Thank you. Resolution 2021-349. Now appears all to accept a bid from Daniel Gordon, the amount of $526, for good and specific.
Yes.
Parcel ID 31-901246, again Shenango Township, approved by Shenango School Board. I'll take a motion to accept 349.
Second.
Motion is second, ready for discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Carey?
Thank you. 350, Daniel Gordon, the amount of $500 bidding for a repository property located at 158 Kerr Road, Nega Township, parcel ID number 31-901285. We have, again, it's duly approved by the school board. Do we have a motion to accept?
Second.
The motion is second, ready for discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, on favor, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Those who care.
Thank you. Up next, we have from Elwood City School District, but located in Wayne Township, resolution Aubrey Jennings, the amount $790 for a pot street property located on Fox Street, Wayne Township, having parcel ID number 36-025400. I'll note that this was approved by the Wayne Township Board of Supervisors, Elwood City School Center Response. I will take a motion to accept the bid.
Second.
The motion is second, ready for discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, Mohawk School District, County Awards, John Boyd, no relation, bidding an amount of $500 for a pot street property located at 135 Genie Lane, Mahoning Township, parcel ID number 24-903430. I will note that the Mahoning Township Board of Supervisors has approved the bid. I'll take a motion for, will be 351.
Second.
352.
352. And I'll second that. All right, we have motion second, ready for discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Those who care.
Thank you. Resolution 2021-353. John Boyd, again, no relation, the amount of $500 for a pot street property located at 156 Maggie Lane, Mahoning Township, I have parcel ID number 24-901637. This was duly approved by the Mahoning Township Board of Supervisors. We have motion to approve 353.
Second.
The motion is second, ready for discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have two warrant registers, dated December 16, 2021, December 14, 2022. Bless you.
Thank you.
October, everybody has warrant. Let my colleagues review those warrant registers and I'll take motion to approve, or more accurately, accept and file both of those warrant registers.
Second.
The motion is second, ready for discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, on favor, please, if I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Minutes from December 14, 2021, that was the last fourth commissioners meeting. Again, I'll give my colleagues a minute to check those over and take a motion to approve and make any changes in that series meeting.
Second.
The motion is second, ready for discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, on favor, please, if I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have no written communications for today's staff reports. If there are any members of staff with us that have anything to report above, we are already on the agenda. Seeing none, movement commissioner reports and comments, I'm on deck first. Only thing I want to make note of today is yesterday, the Office of the Governor announced Keystone Communities funding for various communities and counties across the Commonwealth. Lawrence County was fortunate enough to receive funding for three projects, which was the second most amount of projects funded in any county in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Projects are $500,000 to Dawn Services for the rehabilitation of the Wright Building in the city of Newcastle, $50,000 Dawn Services for a business facade program on the Lower East Side of Newcastle, and $50,000 to the county of Lawrence in partnership with Union Township for a residential facade program in our Union Township project. The notable thing here, this is really what I want to touch on, is that Lawrence County represents less than 1% of the population of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. However, the total grant, of the total grant awards, Lawrence County was awarded 10% of all the funding that was announced, and 8.82% of all the projects that were approved are Lawrence County projects. So I just want to note that we're batting above our weight class here in, or punched above our weight class here in Lawrence County, I mixed two sports there. But we're certainly fortunate to have great partners in Dawn Services and Lawrence County Community Action Partnership and in Union Township. Without those guys, this wouldn't be possible. You know, our job as elected officials, one of our jobs is to bring as much money as humanly possible back into Lawrence County. That's our job as elected officials, that's our job as a community, and we are bringing a disproportionate amount of money back into Lawrence County. So thank you to everybody involved. Loretta?
Fantastic.
Your own deck.
That, of course, great news, and, you know, hopefully 2022, we continue to move forward with different projects that we have and get better at it and be, continue to be that squeaky wheel that allows us to do those things, that's always, always a good thing. I just want to take a minute to acknowledge that it is the holiday week, and we are closed Thursday, Friday, and Monday, and to just let our community know, whatever holiday it is that you are celebrating, we wish you the best, and look forward to our next meeting next year.
Well, we have one more.
Oh, that's right, absolutely, we do, oh, see, I skipped us right into 2022. Absolutely, because I flat, saying Happy New Year, no, maybe I shouldn't be saying Happy New Year. All right. Hey, happy holidays.
There we go.
That's it, enjoy.
Thank you. Dan, your own deck, thank you very much. No, that is good news that came out of Harrisburg. The Wright Building is just down the street here, could almost throw a stone to it, and it's one of the tallest buildings in the city. I think it's, I'll run it in my notes, at least five stories, maybe six. And.
Because there were at least three floors that were used or being renovated before they were apartment buildings.
Right.
It was an apartment building.
Yeah. Very interesting to see how they proceed with that. Good news. On another note, just within the last week or so, PennDOT announced their plans to move forward with the replacement of the East Washington Street Bridge. As old timers call it, the Troutman's Bridge, since that's where Troutman's used to be In giving some thought to that bridge, and I realize it's not a county bridge, but it's interesting that there are two bridges on either side of that bridge, the county owns, and recently, we replaced, the first being the Mill Street Bridge, which was in 2013. And that bridge, you might recall, had a big blue superstructure above it, and of course, that is no longer there. And then the North Street Bridge in 2015 was replaced. Again, both those bridges are owned and maintained by the county. I intend to correspond with Cheryl Moon Sirianni, who's the PennDOT District Executive, and I'd welcome one or both of your signatures, if you're so willing, to suggest that they give consideration in their design of the East Washington Street Bridge to replicate the look of the two bridges that are on either side. You know, for those of you who get down to Pittsburgh, you know, on the Allegheny River, there were three bridges, they called them sister bridges that look alike, those yellow bridges that take you from downtown over to the North Shore. And I'm proud of the look of both the Mill Street Bridge and the North Street Bridge. I do know that one of the comments made to PennDOT was that they were hopeful that when the East Washington Street Bridge is completed, that you'll be able to see the Nishanak Creek, because right now you can't. But with the two bridges we own, you are able to see the Nishanak Creek as you drive over. So I am going to put a letter together and I'll circulate it to the two of you, and if you, if you'd care to join me in sending that to Cheryl, I'd certainly appreciate that. Other than that, wish everybody Merry Christmas, a very happy holiday, but as Chairman Boyd said, we'll be back here a week from today.
Yes, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Absolutely, I think we'd both be happy to sign that letter, and that's a good.
Without a doubt, yes.
Good point. Thank you. Good idea. Thank you. All right, moving on to new resolutions. First on deck, this project's been a long time coming, our IT Director, Bill Bordenaro, able to approach the bench, Bill? When we were interviewing for the new IT position, Director position, one of the questions that we posed was, if you had to start from scratch and do everything over again, how would you do it? This is why.
It was a setup. And we didn't care.
And, no, we're certainly fortunate to have you with us, Bill. I mean, you've led the process through and through so far, and you've done a real bang-up job getting up to this point, so I do want to express our gratitude to you for taking the bull by the horns. This has been a very long time coming, and it's good that, good that next year, we'll have new, modern IT systems all across the county complex. But I'll turn it over to you for specifically, and maybe more technical information on what this project entails.
Good morning, good morning, Chair. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, so what you, the resolution you have in front of you is for the approval to award the contract to Horizon Information Services for the data cabling infrastructure project. We opened this up to bid through the process, we had eight companies respond to the bid, we had a mandatory meeting walkthrough in October, and six companies did come through that. Of those companies, we received three bids. So after reviewing the bids, all the companies were worthy, but the lowest bidder was to Horizon. I've worked with Horizon in other projects with other venues, and I'm confident in what they can do. So I'm eager to get this started, and that's what you're approving of.
All right, excellent. I'll note this isn't a capital budget for next year, it's being funded, well, there's two ways that we can fund it. One is guarantee, the other is what I'm hoping it will fall into, both of which are ARP funding. The first is, and this is what it's structured as right now in the budget, is revenue replacement funding from lost revenues in 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We were able to recoup those losses using ARP funding. Since those are one-time figures, those are one-time replenishment funds, that was part of the capital budget. Forgive me. Yes.
You said ARP funding, was that CARES money or ARP?
ARP.
Because we've not, we've not expended ARP money yet, have we?
We.
Are you saying that's an anticipated?
That's, yeah, yeah, yeah. The only ARP funding we've expended so far is some minor expenses for Delonowski Axlerod and consulting services. So that's, it's been cleared with Zelenkovsky that our, this reimbursement funding is going to be able to come back into the county coffers. From there, it's discretionary, and we can use it for whatever we want to use it for. But in order to fund this specific project, that's what this is being targeted for, we know we can do it that way. If the federal government comes down with, finally comes down on this, it's regulations next year, and those regulations indicate that we can use ARP funding for this project, at that point, we'll sort of shift the revenue reimbursement goalers back into, back to the capital fund to utilize them for other projects, and then move this pot of funding over to our general ARP pot under that project. It's government finance, you're moving a lot of money around a lot of different times, but that's sort of the gist of how this is being, this is being made for.
I hope I live long enough to see those regulations.
You know what I think they're doing, I think they're going to wait till 2024, we're going to get to the end of it, and then we're going to have to get the money back. What's going to happen there? But.
It's insane, because we have to continually, when we have, you know, just different people calling in, what are you doing with the money, so their money's going to be, you know, for this and for that, we just have to. And see, I think I started, well, I guess by the end of September we're supposed to have them, then, no, they said by November, and I'm like, hopefully the end of the year, but, you know.
Hold on.
Yeah, I'm going to have to.
Hold on.
Do you want that phone?
Yeah, you're good, damn, that, ready, your boy.
Come on, we've got to do something here, let's go, get it moving, we're ready.
Any questions, comments, if I call it, it's for.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you, job well done, thank you for your diligence on all of this.
I'm eager to make one.
Okay.
Great.
We like that.
I will take a motion to approve a resolution 2021-354, awarding the data cabling infrastructure upgrades project to Horizon Information Services. I will note that this project has been reviewed by the appropriate administrative authorities, including the Controller's Office and the Office of the Solicitor. They have signed off on it, and under Bill's recommendation, we will, assuming we get two yes votes, hopefully three, enter into this project for a contract amount of $291,300. We have motion.
Second.
The motion is second, ready for discussion, hearing none, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Those who care.
Thank you, though, seriously.
Thank you so much, Bill.
You and Eric are doing a phenomenal job.
Yes.
Up next, 355. This is setting our meeting schedule for 2022, although nothing's really changed. Every Tuesday at 10:00 a.m., we'll still be in the schedule, assuming, again, this is the yes. I'll note that we will have no meetings on March, general commissioner meetings on March 22nd due to the spring CCAP conference, May 17th due to the primary election, August 9th due to the annual CCAP conference, November 8th due to the general election, and November 22nd due to the fall CCAP conference. We will have our annual salary board meeting on Monday, January 3rd, 2022, at 1:30 p.m. That will be to set costs of living increases for the various departments, as well as to ensure that we're adhering to our contractual agreements with our various labor unions. There will also be a scheduled salary board for June 28th, 2022, which is halfway through the year, in the event that anything might come up that requires shifting of personnel or shifting of funding for personnel. Our retirement board, and I'll note that these dates have been cleared with Marquette and Associates to ensure their availability, February 15th, May 24th, August 16th, and November 15th, 2022. And the Board of Elections shall meet Tuesdays as needed at 11:00 a.m. following the commissioners' meeting and/or regularly scheduled public meetings. Are there any questions or comments on the proposed board? Just a few very, very minor comments, and I'm certainly supportive of this proposal, this proposed schedule. We'll have to keep an eye, I think, on, as of right now, the primary election is set for May 17th. There's some talk that that may get moved to June, but it's only talk, but obviously, we have the flexibility to adhere to whenever that date is and make the appropriate changes. The annual salary board meeting that Mr. Boyd referenced, if I'm not mistaken, that's a requirement of the county code, so we will not be the only county having an annual salary board meeting that day. I believe they do say the first Monday of the new year. And just to verify, the retirement board meetings, those four dates, you said, those are all Tuesdays, am I correct? They're right after the commissioners' meeting.
Right after.
Yes. Thank you so much. Absolutely.
Thank you.
All these meetings, I also note, I'm open, eventually, we'll get back to being, we'll travel out in public. Obviously, I don't know when that opportunity will arise, we're planning safe for right now, but with that in mind, I'll take a motion to approve resolution 2021-355, setting the schedule of meetings for Board of Commissions, Board Commissioners, Salary Board, Retirement Board, and Board of Elections.
Second.
The motion is second, is there any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Those who care.
Up, Mr. Chairman, would you please continue, and I have to step off for just a second, but please continue, and then, one of the things I got to do is, anybody want a bottle of water? I want to take one. I want to take a free jug.
I will note that this next resolution is for settlement agreement for the opioid sale.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead, I'll wait.
Yeah, I don't know.
I thought we were going to sit. I ask no disrespect to John, no, thank you, because I'll stick around.
Yeah.
I'll make it brief.
Yeah. My plan for this one, then, we'll make this 356, Commissioner Spielvogel's been following this the closest of the three commissioners, and so, unless Dan, you have any objection, I'll turn it over to her to sort of outline what we have going on here today. Loretta, thank you for your diligence on this.
Okay. I'll make it quick, because as far as, you know, legalese goes, there's always so many different things that are underneath the water, but, you know, the last couple of years, there has been the litigation involving the different manufactors and distributors of the opioids, and different states have gone into litigation to potentially gain some, some, I want to say payback, but to gain some of the.
Restitution.
Restitution for the losses that they've experienced, and we in Pennsylvania as well, for the, having to deal with the opioid crisis and the ripple effect and the aftermath of the, of the issue. So early on, we, we voted to individually, as a county, pursue an opioid settlement with a law firm, and that had been moving along until our state, our Attorney General Josh Shapiro, got involved with other attorneys general throughout the, throughout the country, thank you, Dan, to do what is called an interstate opioid, what they've come up with now is a settlement for that, it's a, the litigation, they have actually been meeting and discussing, and although, to the best of my knowledge, no admittance of guilt or wrongdoing, they're still acknowledging that they have played a part in the opioid crisis. that they have played a part in the opioid crisis that we're now facing. That being said, it's good that we attend to C cap conferences, because this last one that we were at, there was a breakout session that involved discussion on the settlement, the opioid situation, the interest rate agreements forming the trust. And I sat in on that, and there were some different questions that we had the opportunity to pose to the, our state litigators that were handling the case for us. And then, as well, our closing session, our Attorney General Josh Shapiro was there to explain the process a little bit further. The, the long and short of it is that, I believe, hearing the information that has been put together, the way it has been established as a trust, that the monies are not going through the legislature to be distributed, there's a trust being set up, and the money's going to that trust. And the trust is made up of 13 members throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and I do believe that there is at least one county commissioner that will be appointed in each one of the regions across our state. So, we feel that doing that, we will have a voice and a say on how those monies are distributed and what they are used for. Now, there is a Schedule E that is many pages long, that outlines a lot of different ways that the monies can be used. But once again, it's very tentative right now. We are in the process, if we do approve the resolution to move forward with it, then, of course, our solicitor, Jason Madore, has been on top of it. I think, Joe, you also listened in to the last conference call that there was, the Zoom call that we had. A lot of things are getting sorted out and ironed out, but I just, I really think that in the course of, of the events that have happened, that the best thing would be to get involved with the interest rate trust agreement and move forward with the rest of the counties throughout the Commonwealth, and again, the other states that are involved with it. And that way, we know where we're at, where we stand, the monies that we'll be getting. The interesting thing is that because it is the trust, the monies, and I, they'll quote me off the number, because of course it can change depending on the number of counties and municipalities that are participating throughout the Commonwealth, we have the ability to have $6.8 million come to the county over the course of approximately 15 to 18 years. That being said, most of those dollars will be, will be front-loaded for the first couple of years, because we suffered so many different losses from the, from the coroner with, with the, you know, the, the death certificates and, and, you know, the blood draws on, on, you know, the bodies, that those are, those are the things that are happening, having to deal with it all. So, from one point, from point A to point B, those monies can be used to recoup losses that, that we've already, already had, and then at the same time, utilize monies to maybe do further enhancement of the different programs that we have involving the opioid crisis that we're experiencing here for Lawrence County. The interesting thing that I found was that, you know, most allegations take so long to go through and get through the court systems, what we heard at that meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, is that these monies, you know, if all things said and everything done and everybody signs off on it, the monies can be available as early as August or September of next year. So I think that, you know, the information gathering that's been done, the, the way that the, the money is going to be distributed, the trust being set up, you know, the Commissioner's Office having a say in, 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 you know, how the money is distributed and what is done with it, I think it all bodes well for Lawrence County to move forward with, with the interstate trust agreements. Thank you.
Dan, any comments?
Yeah, no, I, Loretta summed it up very, very well, very completely, but very concisely. She noted that early on, in fact, I think it was started by the prior Board of Commissioners.
There it was.
We, along with a lot of other counties in Pennsylvania, kind of took out on our own, thinking that there might be greater opportunity for an enhanced amount of return in terms of dollars. The Attorney General's Office, to their credit, managed to reach this conclusion a lot more quickly than it would have if we had maintained the position of taking this on, on our own and not collectively, as it was with the, with the AG's office. So a number of counties are right now, in fact, I think Mercer County, just within the last week, did what we're planning to do here in the next minute or two.
Beaver did as well.
Yep. So we had a number of counties that have decided to forego their initial plan and, and join this, this group. I'm anxious to see, once the dollars start to flow, what the regulations are, what the requirements are, who we're able to help here in the county. You mentioned the Coroner's Office, obviously, possibly NHDS, possibly the courts.
Correct.
Possibly the Drug and Alcohol Commission, possibly the Human Services Center, and others. Maybe I'm not thinking of, so, no, I, I think we're, we're making the right move here today, but, thank you, Loretta.
Sure.
Appreciate, we both heard the Attorney General speak, but you went to the one breakout session that I didn't go to, so thank you.
And, and it's, and it's, I appreciate that, the, the most important thing that I, that I got from it was, and it's a simple thing, again, having that breakout session at our C cap conference, we were right there speaking with the people in the room that we needed to address our concerns to. And to know that, you know, having that support of C cap, you know, the questions were brought right, right to, to the, the people involved, and, and they got the answers for us, and our, our concerns were heard. And, and there were, it was a learning experience for them, because each county has a different setup for different things. So it was good to know that we could be heard, and that we could, we could all move forward in a, in a unified, in a unified, yes.
Yeah, I want to touch on two things. Number one is that this, this agreement has been reviewed by Lawrence County Solicitor, and he's given his a lot of approval. And number two, and this was actually something that's worked out over the past month, there are assurances in the agreement that this money will come directly to Lawrence County as opposed to being flowed through the single county authority. The benefit to that is that Board of Commissioners, we have a much more, we have much more of an equal view over all of the different effects of the opioid crisis, whether that be impacts out of the District Attorney's Office relating to enforcement of different state and federal laws as they relate to opioids, whether that be from the negative effects that the opioid crisis contributed to mental health, whether that be the negative effects that the opioid crisis has committed to, to alcohol use. You know, we, we really have the ability, as, as a large part of our job is the administration of Human Services across the county, to, to make determinations as to where exactly this money needs to flow in order to best suit our residents' needs, more so than any one agency in, in Lawrence County. But this is funding, just briefly, in reading Schedule E, as Commissioner Steelvogel mentioned, it can be used in everything from structuring additional jail-to-jobs program, it can be used for structuring educational programming in schools to try to ensure that our children don't take up the use of opioids. It can be used to structure reintegration programming for individuals who have become addicted to opioids, can be used for treatment services for individuals who have become addicted to opioids. So this has the ability to really help us put a dent in the opioid crisis in Lawrence County. I'd like to echo Commissioner Vogler, and his thanks to you, Loretta, for taking point on this issue, for attending those, those work sessions, for attending those C cap follow-up Zoom meetings, appreciate your work on it, I appreciate the work of everyone involved in this. This is, this is a really good thing for Lawrence County, insofar as it allows us to better respond to the opioid crisis, and hopefully, again, put a big dent in the crisis's impact on our community.
And correct me if I'm wrong, will there be funding earmarked for larger municipalities? Either of you recollect that that was part of this proposal? Or am I getting, am I getting this mixed up with something else?
It could be. One of the things that, that come out, and I've, I've printed off the, the actual paperwork that goes along with it, the municipalities can choose to go on their own to do different things. They, they could have done the same thing that the county did.
Right.
What, what in essence needs to happen, or, or hopefully that will happen, just like the counties are coming on board, any, any municipality over 10,000.
That's what I was, yes.
Yes, so we need to, in one way or another, just like the City of Newcastle, I think, I believe is the only municipality that falls into that, and I believe our solicitor's speaking with their solicitor, making sure we're all on the same page, that anyone really has that opportunity to do that, but it's, it's, you know, unity, in union, their strength. So let's, we're hoping to get everybody else on board, that those monies, we know that, that's why I say tentatively say this amount of money is what's available for Lawrence County, depending on getting everybody on board, more so for a larger county than us, because they have so many different municipalities, that, that's where the monies might change a little bit, those numbers might fluctuate.
Again, for verifying. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. That be your nick, any questions? Right there. I will take a motion, let's see if any further comment, I'll take a motion to approve Resolution 2021 dash 356.
Second.
Your motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, question on the motion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Those are carries.
Thank you.
Please excuse me, but please continue, I'll be right back.
Thank you. Up next, John, please take this short. We have a number of CYS resolutions on deck today, well, Pat.
It's sprinkled in there.
But, you guys want to approach the bench? And we'll start with, normally I ask how you're doing today, unless we can throw it. But we'll start with Bethany Christian Services.
What we have going on the back? Bethany Christian Services, this is a renewal for foster care, $31.90 a day of Crawford, Allegheny County, last year, 10 youth, this year, 6 youth. Total cost to the county for the previous year was $2,300. Total cost, paid and fed, was $12,377.20, so 20% to the county, 80% to other sources.
All right, questions, comments? I'll note that, well, first we'll do it, I'll take a motion to approve Resolution 2021 dash 357 for contract with Bethany Christian Services.
Second.
I'll second that, and a motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes. Thank you. I want to, for the purposes of the minutes, this is just following parliamentary procedure, you'd be able to make a notation of when Commissioner Vogler left, when he reenters the meeting, and until such time as that happens, the vote should be two to zero. Up next, 358, vocational and psychological services.
It's a juvenile probation, and I think CYS tied in with a couple kids over the past year. It's been kind of sparse because the epidemic that our schools have run, as we come into the new year, we're just, this is a renewal, we're planning on the same thing, it is free for service, so, and the rate when used is 13.33, 33 a month broken down, and that's total cost, county shares 20% of that as we move forward. But what that program is, is it meets one of the four cornerstones of the evidence-based system under, under criminal genetic aid, which is education and vocation. You know, the thing about this is Mr. Edwards, who is also the principal of the program for Cray up off of bomb.
Hey, Cray, Cray's, I know, Blaiman.
Yeah, I've had a lot of them. He's doing it for both sides, so he knows the type of kid, the type of kid we have that are coming into the system, and he meets with these kids one-on-one to help them through or bolster their academics, plus he's also diverting kids that have more aptitude towards vocation and learning different styles, and that's the whole process of the program. These, these kids are failing for a reason, and the schools, they just kind of fall behind the other students, and those are, that's our population, so we put kids into this service, and that's what we use it for.
Sounds good. I'll note Commissioner Vogler has re-entered for the record, and questions, comments on vocational psychological services? I'll take a motion to approve Resolution 2021 dash 358.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, question on the motion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Those are carries.
Thank you. 359, Bethesda Lutheran Services.
This is a new contract, foster care and group home, rate is 85, up to a range of 391.40 in Crawford County. Last year, 0 youth, this year, one child is placed there. We had no expense last year, will have some expense this year. They operate a mother, a pregnant mother program, and a mother-child program, and in essence, we're using this program because we do have a youth who is pregnant that's in their care. This is a specialized program through the state and the state's five-year plan for family first, so we will continue to be able to draw down federal 40 money by using Bethesda, though they are a congregant program, again, because they have a specialized license under the state's five-year family first.
All right, questions, comments on Bethesda Lutheran Services? No questions? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve 2021 dash 359.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, question, motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Those are carries.
Thank you. 360, Families United Networks Incorporated.
Renewal Foster Care, $63.16 on the day out of Allegheny County, four kids last year, two kids this year. Total cost of the county last year, $56.30 and 19 cents. Total cost, when you look at it, total cost was $59,095.40, so again, cost to county 20%, all other sources 80%.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, comments on Families United Network Incorporated?
We're gonna split hairs here, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I need to split hairs for just a second, so forgive me. On the resolution, it notes that Family United Networks is in Muncie, Pennsylvania, that's not Allegheny County, or am I mixing this up somehow? Do they have an office in Allegheny County?
They do.
Okay, because I think Muncie's out in Lycoming County, but not that that's a huge.
The difference between where the contract office or their admin offices versus the local, where we actually have the service.
And that's in Allegheny County. Thank you very much, thank you.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. Uh, this is, any more questions, comments? I'll take a motion to approve 360.
Second.
A motion is second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, question on the motion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Those are carries.
Thank you. And 361, Media Alternatives, never heard of them? Forgot.
This is a renewal, this is a JPO and CYS joint program, this is a flat rate for parenting, $5,898.30. Lawrence County, last year, 15 total youth, estimated 15 for this year. As you break down the cost, cost to total cost last year was $69,834, of which the county picked up 5% of the total cost, as this is a 95.5 program.
Questions, comments? Oh, I'm sorry, what was that?
I'm gonna give you a Christmas present, and I'm not gonna say anything more on our end, so I'm done speaking.
It's not a Christmas present, Pat, that's a Christmas miracle.
Okay, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. You should see what he looks like. 361, I'll take a motion.
Second.
Your motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, questions, messages, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Those are carries.
Thank you. Thank you both, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next, we have two resolutions with our Public Safety Department, with our Director of Paris with us today. Jeff, normally I have a brief ask how you're doing, let's just get through this.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
On, so what do we got?
That is, we're kind of running our public notification system that we are backing on the state contract, it's just time to renew it, so it sprung from January 1 till December 31, 2022.
Okay, and this isn't that much money?
The price is the same as what it's had, and that's why we ended with the state contracts that we're staying with it. We've been approached by other companies, but we're staying with this with the state contract.
$7,548.10, that's just for the record there. Questions, comments, for Director Paris? No questions? All right, I'll take a motion to approve 362.
Second.
Second, a motion is second, any further discussion? Second, motion is second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa please call the roll.
Commissioner Spiegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution 2021-363, for agreement with CenturyLink, Jeff, what's going on?
So this, even though it looks like there's a lot of pages, there's 23 pages that are the scope of work just on what, which is CenturyLink's name now, is going to do with the project. The two projects that we are doing are for the NG911 migration that we're starting to do away with all the phone lines that we have coming in our center. The state is taking over, sort of, I don't want to call it over for next generation, which a lot of cell phones, voice, internet, and all that, the texting, so the state's taking that over. Our first migration, and we're actually on, we're on schedule to be, we're actually going to be the first region, first area to be migrated to the state. Our migration is set for, what is it, March, April, I think it's like April or May of 2025, we'll be all converted over to the next generation, NG911, as they call it, all of our copper phone lines are going to be gone, or what they call selective routers, that NG911 is in a different product development route, all the, Annie and Ally, all the information, all that stuff, it's all being, now going to be on next generation, so all that stuff is going to go away, it's our old legacy equipment. What this is, is this is actually just an amendment to our original agreement and our original contract back in 2014, when we started upgrading our West Core, we just keep extending the contract with the new projects. So what it is, is there's two jobs that they have to do that are basically just, this is, believe it or not, this is just cost for labor, there's no equipment, the equipment's being paid on another contract. This money, and I did, if you see, I have a, it comes size with a budget transfer that I did from one FEMA account to another to pay for this, because we had extra money left in the FEMA account that I'm getting about to have, we're just moving around with this. So the money's already there for it, it's already approved from here or so ago, and also with FEMA's approval and okay with it, we're just, we're putting all this into this and that. We're not the only county, it's everybody from Benango County clear down to Green County, it's all our whole area, all West Core, and actually the southwest, southwestern, Washington counties as well, and that's all.
I'll note that upon that transfer, our projected cost savings on an annualized basis is about $100,000, is that correct?
Yeah, by the time this is all said and done, with what we're paying right now, all of our phone lines, I mean, our biggest expense, one of our bases, one used to be years ago, we were spending like $110,000 on phone lines, on services for all the dial tone, for all the addressing and everything like that, so this is going to start to cut down on a lot of that. But we don't, exactly when is it going to happen, we're probably going to, in the long run, I mean, we're looking at close to $100,000.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Take a motion for 363.
Seven.
Second, motion is second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa please call the roll.
Commissioner Spiegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Thank you, thanks Jeff, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you.
We'll see you later.
Up next, 364, we have to appoint a couple of members, reappoint a couple of members to the Agricultural Preservation Board. First on deck today, I have a preface right out of gates today, Mr. Elder is a phenomenal job, however I did, I guess, I always meant to make a campaign promise that on the policymaking board, I wouldn't vote for individuals to serve more than two terms or eight years. Sir Elder was reappointed in 2010, since then, to hear that promise, I'll be voting no. That being said, I do support Mr. Elder, and under the state law, that for whatever reason, the chairman of the board commissioners has the authority to appoint a chairman of this specific board, and I'm exercising that authority to appoint Lauren as the chairman of the Lawrence County Agricultural Land Preservation, we're assuming his reappointment goes through, so I will note that for the record. Questions, comments on Lawrence 31? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve Resolution 364.
Seven.
Second, motion is second, hearing, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa please call the roll.
Commissioner Spiegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes, now, now, I did, that's the second time. That's, that's what, we're just trying to get through the meeting, and I forget what the, I forget what the hell we're doing sometimes, but yeah, it should be a no.
Thank you.
Just, it's, because I'm seriously so used to saying yes. 365, we've now hit one resolution for every day of the calendar year.
Right.
Debbie Kennedy, reappointment for the board, although that she was appointed in 2019 to fill a non-expired term, so this would be an appointment to her first full term of the Lawrence County Agricultural Preservation Board. Questions, comments?
Just note that both she and Mr. Elder reside in Wilmington Township, that's just coincidental, but that's where they're both from, both good people.
Take a motion to approve 365.
Seven.
Second, motion is second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa please call the roll.
Commissioner Spiegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. This one's a federal library board appointment, I'll note this is not really a policymaking board, it's just sort of an administrative entity that takes care of the activities, the library, so to that end, I'm going to vote yes on it, it's not, it's not a board of significant impact to the county, although they do perform certainly good work. But this is, this is reappointing Judith Kendall of Wayne Township to represent the Elwood City Public Library, appointed Lawrence County Federal Library Assistant Board Directors for a term of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024. Questions, comments on what would be 366?
She does a lot for the community down there, as does her husband, they're both really fine people, so I'm glad to see that she's willing to continue to serve.
Absolutely. Take a motion to approve 366.
Seven.
Second, motion is second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa please call the roll.
Commissioner Spiegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Thank you.
And again, we have a second reappointment to the federal library board, 367, for Becky Chestnut, representing the Elwood City Public Library, she is located in the Elwood City Borough. Questions, comments? Hearing none, take a motion to approve.
Seven.
Second, motion is second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa please call the roll.
Commissioner Spiegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution 2021-368, this is rightsizing the budget for the end of the year, so there's just a number of miscellaneous transfers in there, if you guys want to take a minute to check all those over, I'd understand, but what we've done here effectively is there have been a number of accounts where the revenues exceeded our expectations, they're reflected in this amendment, there have been some accounts where the revenues were less than what we expected it to be, which is reflected in this, and there are a number of expense adjustments, largely as they relate to employee insurance, but a few other miscellaneous ones, the employee insurance and through the HRA payouts, which are costs incurred above and beyond the routine cost of paying the premiums for the employees. Unfortunately, we didn't factor enough money to cover HRA costs in the 2022, or 21 budget, which has been now since updated in 2022 budget, so that largely covers. And there's also some adjusting entries, which, you know, is just making balance about
I have no questions, and I thank you for putting this together.
I'll take a motion to approve.
Seven.
Second, motion is second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa please call the roll.
Commissioner Spiegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is, I think we all, I don't know if we all received mine, I received an email from JR, it's unpaid invoice from earlier in the year relating to the ongoing assessment update project in the amount of $59,555, excuse me, or $54 and some change.
Did you say 60? The resolution says 60.
Yeah, actually, I see what you're saying now. I forgot to add 10 grand to that. Let's adjust, let's adjust that 6 and the increase in to a 5, and that makes that work out. We'll just have to do an informal transfer when we get back up to the additional 10,000, but that gets us almost all the way there. Yeah, thanks for catching me. But yeah, what this does is it gets us to pay that unpaid invoice for that specific project, so again, we're editing this, this resolution is going to say 59.555, it's going to be 69.555, but I'll go back and find the F somewhere. Make this 2021-369. Questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
Seven. Second, as adjusted.
Yeah, motion is second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa please call the roll.
Commissioner Spiegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Thank you.
Up next, we have out of jail, Resolution 2021-370, transferring total of $1,400, $1,400 plus $726, one's a formal resolution, one's an admin transfer, since it's coming from different, one's coming internally, one's coming externally. The resolution is from contingency fund to background and drug testing, amount of $1,400. And then the second is admin transfer, $726 material and supplies to contracted services out of jail. Questions, comments on that? I'll take a motion to approve 370.
Seven.
Second, we have motion is second, ready for discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa please call the roll.
Commissioner Spiegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Thank you.
Up next, we are creating a separate account for Corner Act 182 funding, which is used to fund travel and training expenses for the corner, this has forever been a general fund, it's for administrative purposes, it's a hell of a lot easier to administer this fund when all expenditures and revenues are all in one place as opposed to merge into the general fund, and so to that end, we're basically transferring $25,000 from Commissioners Contingency to Corner Act 182, that's a new fund to establish for these specific purposes. Any questions, comments on that? Resolution, will the motion approve, Resolution 2021-371?
Seven.
Second, motion is second, ready for discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa please call the roll.
Commissioner Spiegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Thank you.
Admin transfers. Assessment, we're taking $60 from contingency transfer into advertising, due to changes in the Sunshine Act, there's been a new advertising burden placed on the office, this is covering the advertising burdens.
I read their ad for paper.
Corner transferring from their contingency $200 to telephone and internet expense to cover some costs associated with their telephone and internet, they're down at the city police station, and so to that end, they sort of share some costs with the city police in terms of their telephone, in other words, we didn't, and because it's a new setup for them, we didn't have historical figures based telephone and internet on the forces, so just transferring to cover that. Courts, transferring $3,000 from arbitrators, $2,000 from jurors, and $460 from office major into maintenance and repairs for the SPM electronics contract. Make a comment on that, I'm not going to. Office major out of courts, $454 from office major to maintenance and repairs for direct image, this is why you read your budget before transferring things. Solicitor, funds needed to pay special labor counsel, $300 out of other legal expenses to special counsel, this is relating to PCOM or PCORP, I always get it too confused, claim and reimbursement for attorney services that they provide. We just did this one.
I just.
This might be the admin one, gotcha. So admin, $726 bucks for materials and supplies to contracted services. Domestic relations, $400 from the contingency materials and supplies, $200 from contingency equipment maintenance to cover some of the year costs. Russo's office, from postage to their water expense, $85 to get them through to the end of the year. Sheriff, $500 bucks from their contingency to travel and training, for some additional training expenses incurred by the office of the sheriff, I think it's related to Castle Rod and Gun Club where they get their firearm certification. Sheriff, from $200 from contingency to postage, I would assume this is due, there was a backlog due to COVID-19 and sheriff activities as a result of this expense increase to higher rate from trend this year, so that's covering that, as well as the anticipated cost increase out of postage. This is what Parrish was talking about a little bit earlier, moving some funds from Regent Purtham Shared CPE to West Core to cover some of those displaced project costs. This is from the controller's office to clean up some of the accounts, $1,900 bucks from FICA salary of staff, temporary part-time, $1,000 salaries of staff, employee benefits, $4,000 movement salaries of staff, salary of controller, $175 to the salaries of staff, FICA expense, $5 to equipment lease, FICA expense, $3 to advertising, salary of controller, $66.77 to maintenance and repairs, again, they sort of clean up their budget. The increased salary of staff expense is due to payouts, vacation payouts, sick payouts and stuff, from the individuals who retired at that office. And last up, CYS, and we've sort of been over this before, this is, this happens every year when it relates to CYS, at least as long as I do budget. CYS, the services are based on need, the need is not consistent from year to year, they fluctuate depending on what the need of the community are, and so while there's generally enough money in the fund to cover all expenses, we have to move them around based on where the need is, so we're moving, I'm not going to go over everyone just because the numbers are a lot, but we're moving a total of $296,144.88 from miscellaneous CYS services accounts to other miscellaneous CYS services accounts. So any questions, comments on any of those, I'll take a motion to transfer, make the administrative transfers, this is A through Z. Oh, look at that, perfectly.
You did, you told me you got the entire after that.
On the, I'll take that motion.
Seven.
Second, motion is second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, all favorably, see if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have no warrants on the table for a motion for final action. Next Commissioners Meeting will be Tuesday, December 28, this will be our last one for the year, also, we were moved off 2022 budget, we made some minor budget adjustments, I don't believe that matters, but in terms of total budget adjustments, we'll see $250 to $300,000. Courts will be closed Thursday, this Thursday, December 23 through next Monday, December